Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
President Huffman?
No.
Senator Lee?
No.
Mrs. Pittenberger? So the motion carries, so that will be removed from tonight's agenda. So now we can we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So Madam President, could you call the roll? The motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended. Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenberger?
Yes.
President Huffman? Next, moving on to minutes. We have the minutes of the July 17, 2023 City Council War session. Could I motion to approve those minutes?
I'll take them.
Second? Thank you. Are there any changes or comments on those minutes? Madam President, could you call the roll? Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenberger?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Next, we have the minutes of the July 17, 2023 City Council meeting. Could I motion to approve those minutes?
Second?
Thank you. Are there any changes or comments on those minutes?
I would like to comment. Thank you to our clerk for transcribing those. I know that was a long meeting. Great effort to put 50-plus pages of minutes together for tonight's meeting. I'm short to your end of time, so thank you.
Madam President, could you call the roll? Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenberger?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
President Huffman? Yes. Presentations, proclamations, and awards. We have a Purple Heart Day proclamation. Mayor McFarland is going to read that.
Whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration still in use, and was initially created by George Washington on August 7th. Seventeen eighteen two was the badge of military merit. And whereas Purple Heart was the first American service order made available to the common soldier and is awarded to any member of the United States Armed Services wounded or killed in combat. The Purple Heart Organization was formed in 1932 for the protection and mutual interest of all who have received the combat declaration. It is composed exclusively of Purple Heart recipients and is the only congressional-chartered veteran service organization comprised purely of combat veterans. And whereas recipients of the Purple Heart have been sacrificed in the preservation of the United States of America and national interest at home and abroad, whereas the recognition of this date and estimated 1.8 million veterans since World War I who have been awarded this Medal of Honor as a tribute to the service and sacrifices of our veterans and especially the valor of the extraordinary men and women who have earned the Purple Heart. As the city of Tip City proudly confirms our commitment as a Purple Heart city and to honor those who serve and have served so faithfully in defense of our freedoms as Americans and grateful acknowledgement of their sacrifice bravery and unwavering commitment as patriots. Now I therefore, Mike McFarland, Mayor of the city of Tip City, Ohio, am to behalf of the City Council to hereby proclaim August 7th, 2023 as Purple Heart Day. And witness thereof, by appearing to set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Tip City to be affixed the 7th day of August in the year of our Lord 2023. You have a Purple Heart flag. And when you're in instruction, we can have it designated. And we are a Purple Heart city.
You, Mayor McFarland? Next, we have another proclamation, presentation, or award for Jan Spates, 2023 Ohio Municipal Clerks Association Clerk of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Spates.
Before I read that, I received a letter today in the mail, and I know Janice has received one. The staff, Governor Mike DeWine's office congratulating her on that. Of which the city manager and Mrs. Pittenberger and myself made the trip over to Florida Columbus to surprise her. Whereas on July 19th, 2023, Janice M. Bates was bestowed the prestigious honor of being named the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association's Clerk of the Year at the recent annual institute in Lewis Center, Ohio. Whereas throughout her tenure with the city of Tip City, Janice has earned her certified municipal clerk and master municipal clerk designations in addition to her APM leadership fellow. And whereas Janice has served OMCA, which is the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association, on various committees, eventually serving as the association's president. Whereas Janice remains OMCA Region Six Chair and previously served as board member for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks as Region Five Director, serving clerks in Ohio, Michigan, Kentucky, Tennessee, and Indiana. Whereas Janice continually strives to improve the administration and value of the municipal clerk's office through participation in educational programs and seminars, workshops, and annual meetings. Whereas Janice has a passion for her profession and training. Her peers and colleagues elicited numerous classes and over 34 APM dialogues to date. Whereas Janice has been actively engaged in her profession mentoring and assisting many clerks across the country since shortly after her hire in 2011. Whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the many accomplishments and contributions that our municipal clerk Janice M. Bates has made to the profession. Now I therefore, Mike McFarland, Mayor of the city of Tip City, Ohio, do hereby recognize Janice M. Bates for being awarded the prestigious 2023 Clerk of the Year Award. And witness thereof, by appearing to set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Tip City, Ohio, to be affixed the 7th day of August in the year of our Lord 2023. And I hope I didn't swell her head too bad.
I have a few other things to recognize. Ms. Spates, first we have Tony Rogers, who might have been a special guest here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and city staff. My name is Tony Rogers. I'm the clerk of the year for the community of Urahides. I'm here tonight representing the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight for a very special presentation. And she just heard the proclamation read by Mayor McFarland. This presentation is to recognize one of your own who has brought great credit to herself in Tip City by her accomplishments and achievements. The Clerk of the Year Award is presented annually to a clerk of council in the state of Ohio that exhibits the qualifications and expectations of the award, including educational and certification attainment, professionalism, service roles, and participation. The winner of this award is selected by the peers and colleagues of the recipient. That said, on behalf of the board of directors and the membership of the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association, it is my great privilege and honor to present the 2023 Clerk of the Year at grand and colleague clerk of council for Tip City, Janice Bates.
Here we go. We're all matching.
We are all matching. We got them. Thank you. We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. I got my own meeting in the car.
Great. I'll come and cheer you on. Thank you. Last but not least, we do have a resolution from the Ohio Senate. And I know Senator Huffman would have liked to have been here to present this to you himself, but obviously not. I wanted to present this to you. This is a resolution honoring Janice Bates as the 2023 OMCA Clerk of the Year. And what this says is whereas the members of the Senate of the 135th General Assembly of Ohio are pleased to commend Janice Bates of being named the 2023 Clerk of the Year by the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association. And whereas this prestigious distinction is a fitting tribute to Janice Bates for the exemplary act she has displayed in all her endeavors. The clerk of council for Tip City, she has supported the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association in a variety of roles over the years, including serving as vice president, president, chair. And she has participated in the International Institute of Municipal Clerks as its Region Five Director for Ohio, Michigan, Kentucky, Tennessee, and Indiana. Indeed, she has helped to guarantee a high level of success for all projects with which she has been associated. And whereas Janice Bates is truly a valued official, for she has combined civic concern and commitment with the utmost professionalism to become a dynamic force in the state. Clearly, her numerous accomplishments are an outstanding reflection, not only on her, but also on her family and on the Tip City community. And whereas through her decisive leadership, Janice Bates has distinguished herself as a conscientious and responsible Ohioan. And to her credit, she has demonstrated how very much an industrious person can accomplish. She can be proud that her unflagging dedication to her job has inspired all those familiar with her work to devote themselves similarly. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Senate of the 135th General Assembly of Ohio, in adopting this resolution, congratulate Janice Bates on this recent accolade and salute her as one of Ohio's finest public servants. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Senate transmit a duly authenticated copy of this resolution to Janice Bates. So, thank you. We sincerely appreciate it. So on our agenda type, we have for the ordinance as amended, Chapter 37 Municipal Employment of the Codified Organizations of the City of Tip City for all employees not covered by collective. This was introduced by Mr. Slagel. Mr. Egleston?
Yes. There's a number of components to this. Wanted to allow manager to modify individual court. Say it was just an employee. And to allow for a non-additional work schedule such as four-hour day work week consisting of 10-hour days starting at 7:06. It also allows the modification of that. These are post changed work schedules. Should not be any additional by work schedule. Let some of the wages. Shall receive electronic statements with wages or on a case-by-case and receiving pretty copy. I did take the liberty and wrong. I apologize. I apologize to the teens, so I did have that in the holiday. Then again, that could be your move if you so choose. Employees for holidays shall be allowed 40 hours personal week here. Have a five-day. Five personal days based upon the normal work schedule per year. They can carry over 32 hours. And that would be for. Change in the schedule, we still wanted it to 32 hours a person. Normally change extension days to hours. For employees working a five-day work week. We spell out explicitly that Saturday, the city manager still doesn't make the Friday section. Working modified schedule such as a four-day work week consisting of 10-hour days. Lines of section calls on the Friday or Saturday employee show or the scheduled four-day work week shall be tied to an additional personal week day for that holiday. Sunday, again, as anybody else, they have Monday off. Our employee may sure see well have overtime holiday treatment with Section 37.26b. Hours of work overtime compensatory time and 37.32e. Holidays and personal days. Only at holidays and 37.32a. Or does made a holiday to clarify the city manager for any additional personal week day for Friday or Saturday holiday. Change in that some personally carrying over noted at D. So no matter what scheduling work, you only be able to carry 32 hours over. If you don't, you don't expect those hours up to 32. You lose that personal time. That's what's then in the ordinance. So this is something, again, staff is asking. We try to be able to work with our staff. We're trying to meet their needs more personally and professionally. So whereas we come to the point, there are a day of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Egleston. Mr. Slagel, you so much responsibility.
Yes.
Are there any council comments related to this ordinance?
I have a couple of questions. One is, I don't quite understand how the current language doesn't give the city manager discretion to implement this anyways.
Yeah, initially it's something individual. I can look work with an individual. It's certainly a separate department. So. I feel this clarifies that it could be an individual.
And then the other part is, I don't understand striking out that part that says mandating that it will not disrupt the abilities of various departments to meet the demands of providing service. We're bringing that mandate to provide service to Tip City residents.
So I'm not sure that disrupts it. It's not you wanted to find disrupt service. It's not there to say, well, you work Monday through Thursday instead of Monday through Friday. You disrupt the service. Again, that's the special manager. I think this clarifies a lot of that. Myself to say, okay, what's the statement? Service. So I do. Do what's in that section.
Already mandate to provide service and have it uninterrupted. It's pretty important. And like I said, if you just wanted to clarify an individual or department, why not just modify that once, one sentence on line two? Why add in the four-day work week for 10-hour days? But my question is, if this doesn't work and services is disrupted too much, then we have to come back and re-modify the language and work, correct? If we have to go backwards, so basically this is an example of four-day work. If it doesn't work, we go back through Monday through Friday. So. Also, Monday through Friday, it says basically to allow additional such as. Then say that's mandated, such as, this is an example of modified work. You're working 40 hours, four days. So I don't believe you really need in there disruption of service. Again, that's my interpretation. You as council can change that as you like, but that's my interpretation. And I think this, to me, clarifies what the manager can't do without saying, well, we disrupted service. I think that's too broad of a statement myself. But again, this is proposed and you can, obviously, council can modify what they don't agree with. Explanation, I think this is more clear as to what the manager can't do. A specific need from staff asking you to, for this work week? Because staff members come and say, I need to work a four-day work week. This is a whole that asked if they can do a four. So I can't go to the old, go to the old order. So I'd be about to each one, say you, 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 you. Instead of just saying, look, it's a department to go. Do you want to do this? Like saying that would be our GIS technician. Yes, right now you can say, gee, can I work 40 work weeks? Nobody comes in to see me, because you can have extra day. I can do that. Department as a whole comes and says, look, we would like to try. This is the department as a whole. Because again, initially had disruption of service. What does that mean? So I go individually, you, 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 you. I'll get to have four 10s. And that's something that will be disrupted service. So. To me, again, to me, it clarifies it. I mean, again, council can do what they would like to do with this. I think it just can be said department as a whole. You can do this in the folks who work here. If you have individual needs, if the department says no, one person says yes, then I could go and do it for one person. Yeah, disruption is too broad of a statement as to who can interpret this disruption of service. You're working 40 hours, or it's Monday through Friday, Tuesday, Monday through Thursday, or some other anomaly of that. So yeah, council want to keep this work list on.
So if you remove the disruption of service, then it is skewed toward not providing service, but rather meeting the needs of modifying the individual or department's schedule. I think that the purpose of the city people here would be to provide service to citizens. So while I don't think that you should be overly restricted in terms of discretion to allow people to work a modified schedule, the ordinance hasn't exist without this modification. You have the discretion to do that. But I don't think that the focus of the people that are working in this building are to serve the citizens. You start to modify this in a way that disrupts them. That's something that I would be opposed to. I think the existing ordinance provides the discretion that you need. I don't think that adding the department does that in any way because you could give all employees in the department a modified schedule under the existing ordinance could be.
Okay. Again, that's what I think needs to be done. I don't think it allows me to do it.
This is to make employment better. Four 10-hour days. I don't know if, being out in the working world, keeping employees is tough these days. People want flex hours. They want four 10s, especially the younger generation. And it's getting harder and harder to do that. Now, if somebody chooses to work four 10s Monday through Thursday and somebody chooses to work Tuesday through Friday, somebody will be here to do something. This is not taking away from the service of the people. This is trying to maintain and develop new employment for the city. We had the same thing with the fire department. This is to try to bring people on, and we're having trouble all the way around. In the world out there right now, we can't get young people to do anything. And that's not being rude. That's just what we're seeing out there. And they're being told, educated. You can do anything you want. You could flex you whatever you want to. This is to help the city recruit people. And a lot of these older guys, these people out here, are all getting within four years of retirement. This is helping them to keep and bring on new people. And that's one of the reasons why Tim is doing this.
Well, outside of the fire department, are we having trouble staffing? Staff? I haven't heard any, anything that we've had trouble bringing people in. Out, I mean, I understand the fire department because we hear about that. Outside of the fire department, are we having trouble retaining the staff? Bring in more staff?
What we've done is we're looking, being proactive. And again, this just starts, it says, I mean, everybody in the city's going to work four 10s. Or one high is a half a day on Friday, which does a loss of flexibility. Some are English, do a lot of four 10s. They get more done, more productive, and they have that long weekend, which within a bargaining contract, we can make those modifications. We're allowing our. Same ability to let us know how good are we going to have here to work and balance that life. We have kids, we have people, kids that are saying, hey, you know, can I do this? I can say the day I'm paid here, it's one less day driving. So again, I've had departments ask, can they do this? And we're saying, council gives us a blessing, then yes, we can perform zoning and engineering. We'd like to try it at this point. Others are talking about it, and we haven't got to that point for the yet. You see, some communities are going to be able to be proactive and get ahead of the curve because you can't offer top wages to be competitive with other communities. Is this an incentive? They say, I know, I've got every Friday off, so to speak. So I think it is a good recruitment. Staff down the road, I mean, it is a tight market. That's all there is to it. So again, it says, it's all cut and stones. We work with staff. You tell them, if you do want to do this, then you've got to present to us a plan. Plan of how you're going to serve the public within that 40-hour week. With that 40 hours being 40 hours. Because again, what is disruption of service is whatever you want to.
Have established that we have the discretion to do that now. So I don't think that this adds anything to that. If you gave every employee within the department, there's nothing in the existing ordinance that restricts you from doing that. This becomes more restrictive by giving a simple schedule. It eliminates the need to consider the needs of the public in meeting. And to answer Mr. Liddy's question, my understanding is you have multiple people. Vision that finance can be used. So I don't think that what we're doing right now indicates that we are unable to attract them. And at a meeting and a side session, honestly, there were so many places that says, what department are we going to do that? Seems to counter being flexible for each employee as if finance is giving it. But don't mean it's not, or vice versa. I think that that creates a whole other lot of concern.
I don't. I think this speaks for itself. Again, we're just asking to heed it. Again, heed it. Vote for it or not vote for it, I think it's a good tool. It's going to help down the road. And again, it doesn't mean every department. Finance doesn't do it. And whichever does, that plays an issue. I think it allows the manager to sit back with the staff. Again, four 10s is just an example. It just says such as, and then say, that's exactly what you're going to do. And that's the only thing you can do. Really sit back and debate it all and make this to who says what. Again, I don't think it says what you think it says.
Do any departments modify the dates during four-hour work week? Do any departments currently do a four-hour work week? Four-day work? Yes. So. So you already have your four.
That's well, because they have union contracts and we have the ability to modify through union contracts. So that's. It's why you have flexibility and we work with them saying, these are the things you can do, these are the things that. This was brought to us by the electric department initially. We said, look, by the time I set up, I get off the job within eight hours. I'm not getting done what I need, but I got the 10 hours. Guess what? I'm getting done, reducing overtime by 32%. So it is a good thing. And employees got used to it, said, you would like this. Other departments have gone, I'm going to do it. But then the parks and the public works said, we don't want to do it. So we said, that's fine. You don't have to. Some of them, the public works and stuff, have said, they would love to have four 10, 10-hour days. But that has to be the department as a whole. Yeah, I think it does what it's intended to do. May I add, I think it tends to do what it's supposed to do.
The public hearing is now open, would anyone from the public like to speak? The public hearing is now closed, non-attorney, call the roll.
Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
President Huffman?
No. Mary Farland?
Yes.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
No.
Mr. Lady?
No.
Ordinance nineteen twenty-three. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance amending twenty twenty-three appropriations and modifying the annual operating budget as a result of this action. This was introduced by Miss Pinder, Mr. Eggleston?
Yes, again, this is to appropriate the money for the purchase of the greenhouse for five seventy-one. The reserve, I believe, to take for this, or as the council says, really? There before, it's that.
Then, Mr. Pinder, do you still wish to sponsor this?
Yes, I do.
Are there any council comments?
Maximum that it forward.
Any other council? None, the public hearing is now open, would someone from the public like to speak to this? Here, none, the public hearing is now closed, non-attorney, do you call the roll?
Mrs. Pinder?
Yes.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
Mary Farland?
Yes.
Mr. Lady?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three. Next, we have ordinance vacating alleyway bounded by inlocks two seventy-three, two seventy-four, two seventy-five, eight sixty-eight, and eight sixty-nine. This was introduced by Mr. Enslin, Mr. Eggleston?
Mr. Spring. This legislation essentially vacates a approximately one thousand square foot section of public right of way. Best across the property, the property itself is composed of several different inlocks, this particular sort of bisects those inlocks. Alleyway itself is undeveloped and unused, essentially just like a grassy area. It's part of their law, and you never thought there was an actual alleyway. There's utility companies, that there's no active utilities within this area, and they're seeking for this section of alleyway to vacate. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Mr. Enslin, do you still wish to sponsor this?
I do.
Are there any council com- The public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak to this? Call the roll.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
President Huffman? Yes.
Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Lady?
Yes.
Mary Farland?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one twenty-three.
Next, we have ordinance amending chapter thirty-four of the compact ordinances of the city of Tiscity, Ohio. This was introduced by Mary Farland, Mr. Eggleston?
Ah, yes, this, yeah, I know, there's still a ordinance tonight that came out by the law director positions. First is chapter thirty-four, which, yeah, discussions as to modifying this particular ordinance. It does strike out references to assistant law director, adopting its mission bonds, going to municipality. This mobility, types of new staff, now pretty much section B is paid for by the director of law. A, B, C, D. To take into consideration of that's ordinances passed, then following some of these sections, chapter thirty-seven. At this time, the public hearing, the staff is asking that this department be adopted.
Mary Farland, do you still wish to sponsor this?
Yes.
Are there any council comments related to this ordinance?
Discussion about it, I personally still think that the city will serve best by employing a firm versus hiring a single individual. I think it makes more monetary sense, I think it makes more sense from a productivity standpoint. I'll be voting no on this for that reason.
And I would concur with those reasons, I don't think that city, that this makes sense considering the information that's been presented to council. We've had a lot of discussion on this. Well, I appreciate Mr. Freeman's service, I think that, you know, represented that that would continue in the same capacity without a change to the ordinances or this position. And I think that this, the way we have it structured now based on the city and our legal needs, don't be voting no on this.
No, I'm agreed, I would be voting no.
Other council comments? None, the public hearing is now open, would any members of the public like to speak to this ordinance? Here, none, the public hearing is now closed, non-attorney, please call the roll.
Mary Farland?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
No.
Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lady?
No.
President Huffman?
No.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance, we have twenty-two, I'm sorry. I think, is that ordinance twenty-two, twenty-three? Okay, thank you. Next, we have ordinance modifying chapter thirty-seven, the compact ordinances of the city of Tiscity for employees not covered by collective bargaining agreement to add the position of director of law and modifying section thirty-seven point one-six to include an exception by Mr. Slegel. Mr. Eggleston?
Yes, again, this does add the law director into non-organic positions. And because the charter says that the manager hires a director of law on approval of council, we reference that section in the charter, six point zero three. So that process would be different than hiring any other employee. So, yeah, modify chapter thirty-four, wrestle council also doubt this ordinance on the public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
Do you still wish to sponsor this?
Yes, I do.
And are there any council comments related to this? Here, none, the public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak to this? Yes, it's now closed, non-attorney, do you call the roll?
Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
No.
Mr. Lady?
No.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
Mary Farland?
Yes.
President Huffman?
No.
Ordinance twenty-three twenty-three.
Next, we have an ordinance updating chapter thirty-seven, the citizens' pay of the compact ordinances of the city of Tiscity section pay and benefit schedules for all city employees and collective bargaining agreement. This was introduced by Mr. Schwab, Mr. Eggleston?
Yes, this does establish the maximum pay as a director of positions. So it is adding, just adding that position on. So we have staff asking by the public hearing, so on top of this.
Do you still wish to sponsor this?
Yes.
Are there any council comments related?
I'll be voting no on this again, same reason. For me, I think this is a bad business decision for the city. I think we're going to incur additional legal expenses that are unnecessary and that we have to serve as well as having a firm. I think this is a time that most municipalities are not taking on additional employees, but rather trying to outsource services, such as legal services. I think that we have that opportunity without taking on a full-time law director. I know there's been discussion too about the amount to be paid to this position and whether this is truly a full-time position. You know, whether that Mr. Freeman presently is ties, it's a part-time employment, there's been a lot of discussion and confusion. So for that reason, I'm voting no. Are there any other council comments?
None, the public hearing is now open, would someone from the public like to speak to this ordinance? Here, none, the public hearing is now closed, non-attorney, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
Mr. Lady?
No.
Mary Farland?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
No.
Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
President Huffman?
No.
Ordinance twenty-four twenty-three.
Now, the resolutions, tonight we have a resolution on gas emissions from new, modified, and reconstructed fossil fuel, fire, electric generating units. Emission guidelines for greenhouse gas emissions from fossil fuel, fire, electric generating units and repeal of the Affordable Green Energy Rule eighty-eight FPD, regulation thirty thirty-two for the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Eggleston?
Yes, again, I think this power, yeah, this has passed a resolution opposing excuse me. Opposed, again, it does kind of cut out some coal-fired plants, which we are part of one. Asking that, Tom, I don't know, I don't know, they consider their stance on it. We still do have things on the planet that we have. So it's a catchment, if you want, you can see that, but say, I don't know, you can live to this, but start making a war. Some health standards, right? Generating electricity.
Well, Mr. Eggleston, I'm not sure if I could not hear what you were saying.
Sorry, maybe let the resolution have to say, look, the government's trying to tell us exactly, you know, getting so restrictive on our coal-fired plants, natural gas, that it's going to be very hard to comply with the regulations. So I have to say, the russians, at least, let them do it, we're not happy. You will, again, we have coal-fired plant that at the time lines they give, I believe, were just too stringent to be able to meet what they're trying to do. So they're asking, they should reconsider those. They have a pretty large investment in the permanent state coal-fired plant. Our plants to date, this was built to shut down due to back of the connections. Our residents would be flipping the bill to keep paying for that plant, so. EPA, they certainly take that into consideration. Over east of those regulations. See, yeah, it's worth it on our behalf of this.
Well, that's, Mr. Are you?
That's the council, that's the resolution.
Okay, any sponsor for this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
Any second?
I'll say it.
Are there any council comments?
I'll make this really easy. We've gone down, I work in the power industry, my company actually works in this. And we've gone from thirty-something coal plants down to twenty-something coal plants, and they want to double or triple the amount of electric cars out there. There's not enough power generation, there's not enough transmission lines. There's no engineers on top of this thing thinking this through. And this is for the public, this is going to be a really bad deal, really bad deal. And their pollution standards are unbelievable. It's, it's, there's no common sense to this. We'll be paying, we'll be paying for this for thirty, forty years. So I recommend we back this.
Other council comments? None, the public hearing is now open, would anyone from the public like to speak to this resolution? Public hearing is now closed, non-attorney, please call the roll.
Mr. Lady?
Yes.
Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
Yes.
Mary Farland?
Yes.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-three twenty-three.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract to purchase certain real property located at forty-one fifty-five Peters Road. Seventy thousand dollars. Would the city pay the closing costs? Mr. Eggleston?
Yes, yes, for substation property, we're working with Mr. Steinhardt. Again, we offer, counteroffer, they wanted us to, in addition to seven point four-one acres, want us to purchase some additional acres for the transmission lines, we go back from the substation to the back of the property. We agreed to that, and so they want us to purchase seven point four-one acres. So I think we'll some acre, somewhere.
Someone like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
Any second?
I'll say it.
Any council comments? None, the public hearing is now open, would anyone from the public like to speak to this resolution? Now closed, non-attorney, please call the roll.
Mary Farland?
Yes.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
Mr. Lady?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-four twenty-three.
Next, we have a resolution to continue in the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan in conjunction with the Miami County Emergency Management Agency. Mr. Eggleston?
Yes, all jurisdictions do about this plan, it's updated. Services, they're asking council to adopt the resolution, just as over this town as well.
Would someone like to sponsor this resolution?
I will.
Any second? Here, none, the public hearing is now open, would anyone from the public like to speak to this resolution? Here, no one, the public hearing is now closed, non-attorney, please call the roll.
Pinder?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Slegel?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mary Farland?
Yes.
Mr. Enslin?
Yes.
Mr. Lady?
Yes.
Resolution.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with performance site development trial for the fourth of the fifth street of eight hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Mr. Eccleston?
Yes, so two bidders, get double J instructions, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight hours, and we have performance site development, twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-five. discrepancy between the two staff did kind of have performance site development, engineers have rechecked, rechecked the digital models and to make sure that nothing is missed, so asking council to approve the resolution about performance site development to install a construction according to this.
Someone like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
Second?
I'll second.
Any council comments? None, the public hearing is now open.
Quick, I'm sorry, quick. Still council, you said council, that's right.
That's right.
Two bids, was that surprising that there were two bids? Or was your received four bids, but two of them were so high that they couldn't be considered. Anytime you get above ten percent of the, over the engineer's estimate, we cannot consider those bids. So the two in front of you, those two that were within the legal limitations, but we did receive four bids, so, okay. So it wasn't a warning sign that fewer contractors are available or anything like that. I think we're in law interest, but I think that there were, the couple that did not bid that believed that the engineer's estimate was a little bit low, when they did ten percent, so, not just the four that were received, but I believe there were at least two that would have bid on the, bid on sorry.
Any other council comments? Not open, would anyone from the public like to speak to this resolution? Here are no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam clerk, please call Seigel?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Carlin?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six. Next, we have an ordinance imposing a moratorium for a period of one hundred and eighty days on acceptance of applications and the granting of permits for new sub Eccleston?
Yes, again, the recession, contemplating, staff has proposed a new legislation based on those discussions to, excuse me, with the C I C going forward eventually with a plan where you develop is to take out the storage units and decide with the opinion of the regulations, shouldn't they post it on this, so they're asking, it's the, it's the public here.
Is there a sponsor for this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Miss Lanius, the status of higher than HR generalist? Anything on the same topic?
Received five applications, have to go through them, yes. Initially, it was based had, it's a long dispute, we see, qualifications, we may have to re-advise, so a different option, so I'm still working on it.
Other options are you considering?
It comes back, it's a, we still don't get the qualifications, we may have to consider company counsel using our firm. See, that's worth reposting, show us one more application, so we may try so it comes up, there's something else we might want to say, or if you consider, try it one more time, so it's, you can contact the firm initially, have a proposal from them, to probably looking at multiple facets, maybe even looking at system.
So to understand the sound, you're going to redo five applications and what? And then make a decision this week as to whether you're re-posted, and what would be the current implications?
Take see what comes back, yeah, nothing comes around that often after challenging this.
One hundred and thirty days.
And then also, contact the company to see if that's
Who is why you're doing that? Human
Number two, the part has, I said all three others, situation arises, we take care of stuff, how they issue arises, so far, again, we have various issues, fire is as far as, we're staying key, but
Fire DMS, that feeds into our next, since I said I'm too far ahead of where we are, but certainly hiring is something that we've been reminded is a necessary component to
And that's part of this civil service for the full-time employees. As Bates says, drug testing, schedules, background checks, so that's how stuff goes on, we do background checks for the police department. She sets up, giving out information on drug testing, so that stuff is outside, we still do advertise for our part-time employees, which we still are taking applications and people who are similar.
Process, valuable.
It is submitted, it's processed. So if data comes in, it's, they start the process, they get their certifications and all those things, so
And who's doing that?
Chief, who knows, who they look at.
So they change, then the assistant chief are processing each application that comes in from the Fire DMS right now?
Yes, ma'am.
A review, interview.
All the applicants?
So there's, goes out there, I'd like to find, see what
How many applications have you got?
I try to put that in every monthly newsletter, so if you're keeping up with the narrative on the monthly newsletter, you'll have that number. Currently, right now, we have two applications on the file, one is being processed, we did receive an application with a weekend for volunteer fired position, and we did place ads on the city's website through the new communication center for volunteer and part-time E N T and private personnel.
So how many pending applications do we have? Those that have been submitted but haven't been hired?
We only have two of those, and we reached out to both of those late last week.
So is this something that you need to jump, for some to take over, the application review and, and then you process for the Fire DMS also?
For all of them, yes.
Does that urge getting that position filled, so that we can proceed with that in six weeks to be?
We would want to have it filled also, just make everybody's chocolate, it's consistent, keeps everything, it's certainly consistent, or it shouldn't be, but, so, say, Thomas Pittenger was hired, we, that we had, really, staff doing the same thing we're doing now, so that is worth his point, he has to be asked somebody to work through, to be able to assess, or should we, or should we, so
Have you done, have you, have you considered whether the salary is competitive for this position, and that, it is part of the salary compensation survey, we, they're still working on that part, so we don't know where we fall with any of the positions, but we don't know. And when do you expect that to be done? They thought it would be a lengthy process, I anticipate they interview us here soon, to see where we fall, because they want to kick it back for you too, so, they have all the data, so far, I think, for us. So when is that, eight weeks done? In September? It's going to be back, every three months, yes.
Again, whatever data we get, it's coming back to council, because it's before the year after, again, our hope was to have this done, so we get into budget talks, and the council will have that information on positions. If anything looks like it needs to be raised or changed, then, again, during budget talks, we'll be able to, session, discuss these things, and it's going to be, again, most committees are doing this to find out what inflation's done, wages, and find out if it just, you need a date.
Anything else on this topic of the HR generalist? Fire DMS update, it's last time we had a lengthy discussion, and I understood that we should update the proposal at this meeting?
Yes, we got a council that talked, Chief, about finance director, and we believe that this point, council hired the next eight, for twenty-four, twenty-five, then Chief, Assistant Chief five through the week. Permanent part-time schedule, more hours, with the possibility that, again, they exceed the A C B, and they may be eligible for benefits, that does happen once in a while, but most young kids don't, obviously, get benefits on the parent's plan, but we also believe that with that, permanent part-time, some of those will apply for the next positions, and therefore, there could be four positions that would be a wash when it comes to benefits anyway, so that plan, basically, we have time between now and June thirtieth, to adjust, obviously, we need to, but we're not in the exact place having three part-time and a few full-time.
So, so the updated timeline is hire the next four in October, which
Well, next, well, the
And then hire another four at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, or are you saying, do you use the other four mid twenty twenty-four, and then the final four at the beginning of twenty twenty-five? I'm just trying to understand my timeline.
So what we're doing is, because it's taking the timeline and hire the four capitals, we have plenty to really do twenty-four. But we also feel that we have the funding to be able to incorporate twenty-fives also. Then by the time it gets to twenty-five, we'll be able to then get the session budget and go into, in twenty-five, hiring for twenty-six, that completes the roster. But we can get ahead of the curve, because we do have the funding to be able to do that, again, John's, I'll do the numbers, with the townships generating revenues, what we have for the city, understanding, what, we want to, we want to speed up the process, we have that opportunity to do it right now, and still need to, requires the budget of that department, so, we think that's a better option, getting the other positions on board, and then get the permanent part-time and part-time to fill in, which, again, that is always a challenge, one way or the other, Chief feels at this point, that this proves our stepping up and doing more.
Chief?
Twenty-four to twenty-five to twenty-six, can you expand that, four-year, another four-year plan?
Yes, 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 I'm on board with that. So, right now, we're hired the four now, but we're hiring them all. As we waited nine months to hire the, to delay these, we have funding that we could hire twenty fours right now, okay? But looking at the budget overall, we believe we can also hire twenty-five, so instead of taking four years, you're going to take, really, one year to fill those three positions. Then in twenty-five, you'll be hiring the last four in the plan, because every year was hire four, and now with twenty-six hiring the last four in twenty-six. So you'll have three full-time employees on each shift. Chief, Assistant Chief. Then you're also going to fill in part-timers, hopefully, at least three a shift. So we're just speeding up the process, and we're not going, okay, now we'll hire at the end of the year for twenty-four, if you had a twenty speed up the process and get more full-time in to help with that. Right, right now, well, Chief's going to do some lateral movements, so some of the staff that we already have may qualify for lateral entry, so, again, it's getting those people in, getting some civil service, and then getting
The high ones are quicker than advertising, like
Part-time on staff that want to do it full-time.
They're open, they're qualified, and yeah, as long as everybody meets those qualifications and look at them, again, it's a civil service process.
What I understood last time is we have forty-one part-time.
If hiring the captains, then that number's going to be
So they're part-timers now?
They're, yes, ma'am.
So that takes you down to thirty-eight part-time, plus the three would then be full-time?
Yes, they're, they're converting to full-time, so, in essence, it's a plus, because we're taking personnel that aren't only working somewhere around twenty hours per week, and they're going to be working at full-time.
And then you told us that you had sixteen to twenty of those are candidates for full-time? Is that correct?
Yes, if we do the process through civil service, the requirement somewhere for one year, so that will exclude some of our internal part-time personnel. Original appointment, that's what personnel throughout the years, throughout these last four years, that have left and verbally, they have indicated that they are interested in applying when we do the lateral process. So what AC and I are trying to do is go through the, we're going to run the process, and as simultaneously as possible, initiate the original appointment list at the same time, which does take longer to answer Mr. Lee's question previously. If we do lateral process, the P D, as you, they have a great format and template that will civil service laws are exactly the same for both entities, it took approximately two months to go through that process and have people on board working. So I can't sit here and tell you with one hundred percent certainty we'll have it all paid through the lateral process, that's why we're doing the initial appointment and lateral process as simultaneously as possible.
And how many of your part-timers are working up to thirty hours now?
Very few, to be honest. One percentage is right around fifteen, sixteen percent work, the full-time, just very, you know, what they decide to work.
So you say full-time, are you speaking about your department or about other departments?
They work full-time, the only two full-timers currently are A C and I.
And how many of your working up to thirty hours for a team?
Approximately six hundred percent.
So, I guess I'm confused about what you're telling me, because, so you're saying fifty to sixty percent of what?
I, the part-time, the perfectly
Okay, so thirty-eight people, you have fifty to sixty percent of those working thirty hours?
Eighteen or twenty. It's, it's not thirty, it's, we try to work twenty-four hours every six days, our time schedule hours a year, and that comes out to about twenty-seven hours per week if they work that schedule.
Okay.
Sixteen hours, that's one percent.
But, Mr. Eccleston had responded But Mr. Eggleston had responded to an email that I sent asking about what was being done at this point. He said that planning something as of July twenty-fifth to, was that given unlimited to employees or thirty, what we should work this year?
We're still not trying to do unlimited hours. Council's willingness to have stated to me or at least I heard multiple times after reviewing the video and standing here that we have which can create more costs. So we opened up the scheduling that when there's four or less people on duty, they can sign up and work more hours. That's, that's not safe. Quite honestly, if they're working three and four shifts inside of one week at twenty-four hours at a time, it's not safe for them or the citizens or the fellow coworkers. So we bring those people to somewhere between forty, forty-eight hours is our rough, is our best that we try to allow people because it can become pretty demanding after that.
So that would be two shifts, I know it's two twenty-four instead of their working.
Sometimes it's two twenty-four, sometimes it's four twelve. Again, some of it, it depends on that personnel, depending on what we need. Since July seventeen, most of our shifts packed greatly and are equal to three. We need them when they have them, we have to fill in.
Same, we as in yourself and assistant chief are filling in if you have less than three?
We have seven, two, yes, ma'am.
Okay. There's also.
That doesn't preclude us from if we have personal minutes in our lives that are on our full lives all the time and simple. Regular schedule, not vacation time, but the rest of the administrative staff, we go to the.
What are you doing then to assure that you have adequate staffing during those periods?
So we use the live tech schedule and schedule and software system. And we put out alerts that we are short among people and we ask you.
Still seeing lapses in having three people on them?
Not since it's not a perfect system. We need these, the manager outlined earlier, to start as soon as possible and help us as much as possible. Assess what it's doing in the short term and then we assess what we need to do in the long term.
So before the implementation of that policy, how many I don't know if you're doing it a week or a month, how many times were you falling below the three? It's now what you're saying is essentially not.
Last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Summer's always the most difficult. So what I did is to anticipate some of these questions. The monthly reports have narrative since June twenty-second, we've been highlighting this issue and we've been highlighting what we've been trying to do. With ACA, I was told when I got here and until the last council meeting, it was imposed that I should, I shall do everything within my power currently and leadership-wise to not allow people to go over thirty. There was a percentage of error that could be made and have people go. We've done really well at keeping within that thirty because not wanting to extend the policy of not having the ability to extend other insurance benefits to part-time personnel. We've just recently made changes to all of that, so it's not allowed to sign up for more hours, not unlimited hours, but they can sign up for more and it has proven a benefit.
I, I, I love this view, I'm just asking, you know, the three weeks before now, how many times a week were you falling below three personnel versus now? And I'm sorry, I might have missed that on Friday later.
Well, you know, it's.
Just general, and I don't need an exact version, I'm just curious, how, how, how that policy has.
I will go, I will go with the year-to-date from June twenty. We had working men on duty fifty-nine percent of the time, two paramedics on duty fifty-two percent of the time, four firefighters on duty fifty-three percent of the time. And our station was out of service for no units or personnel one percent of the time, which came out to it's about twenty-four hours at this current time. We couldn't even one ambulance or one fire truck to a call. And that's been delineated thirteen months in my monthly reports to council for your consideration. What we need now is we've been, I believe we're all a team. I believe that you guys have your parts, I believe that we have our parts to do. I am asking for your consideration to allow us to have the funding. Finance director is double check, triple check to hire eight personnel full-time as soon as possible to supplement for part-time so that we can staff at as best we can currently and then assess that after we have some data to prove that it's either working or not working. It's a few more playing that, how many more questions you need to ask me to get that through, that's what we need.
I wanted to say good job, I don't know where you're, I'm happy that we're now staffing people at least have three. I don't know where you're getting, I just want to say thank you for going from it sounds like almost fifty percent of the time having less than three individuals on shift to not having that at all for the last three weeks. That is, that is a substantial gain as far as safety to the citizens. So I wanted to say thank you, I didn't want to say let's take money with you, so.
And I, if I, if I could have given that, I'd say thank you for taking money. It's not from me, this isn't for me, it's not for assistant chief, it's for citizens. You've told me last council session all of, not collectively, but it's very apparent, we're all concerned about the safety of our citizens, all of us. We did said what him and I and finance director and AC, our teams come up with, that's what we need.
Initially, coming here, also the fact, they can work as many hours as they want to be in. When eight kick in, limited thirty hours, then that's what puts the pressure on the budget because we work more than thirty hours six months through bullying or rolling period. Then basically now you've got offer insurance. If you got thirty people that are doing that, that gets very expensive. So we really made that decision, Chief really tried to keep everybody within that, knowing again there's a little buffer. It's come to a head with the fact that, you know, part-timers just hard to find, get fillable slots, but and again, make something that's just really, was coming on and just didn't get noticed as well, but.
What do we need, the?
This is the plan, hire eight more full-time, fill that twenty-four, twenty-fifth, we're going to hire four, move for that and then again, the chief will fill in the best he can with part-time, part-timers to get those extra three or so on that shift, but.
The inflation?
No, I just.
To hire the eight or?
No, I just need council to say you recognize that and go ahead and move forward, the money's there. No appropriations needed, just go ahead and move forward, understanding that if individuals get over that thirty limit, which we're going to, I'll end up doing it obviously, that you may the following year have to offer those benefits and pay for benefits. But it's only one year benefits, then you start the process again. So if council on board wants to that, tomorrow, the chief will be able to get ads out and get exchanged here.
Our un-concerned move forward, but again, just for the sake, thank you to staff, the chiefs for implementing the policy.
You're welcome.
Staffs, the fire department, so we have people on duty. I appreciate all of you bearing our concerns and implementing the policy that addresses this.
You're welcome.
Assistant, the rest of council, favor.
So Chief, there were some things also brought up about, I know there used to be like an on-call policy or some pay that was given to people to be on-call.
In chapter thirty-seven, we started off by this.
So is there a reason not to extend that to your employees now to have, because I know Mr. Eggleston has said a number of times, we can't force people to come in or we can't require people to come in, is there a reason why we can't implement that on-call in order to assure that we have people available even if they're not in the station house?
It's already been on policies to have that. Anybody on the roster is welcome to put themselves on-call as often as they want and we don't, we've never said, don't come in for a call. We've always welcomed people, we've always welcomed people to do a on-call process. I've said before, several iterations of what that on-call looks like. The last time we tried to implement that, it was me was trying to pull the weight and doing that on-call as often as possible, at least twice a week was our minimum. We were making it and when we turned around in six months, me and that other employee were the only two people doing it. They're not interested in being on-call to where they're restricted. In fact, I had one member that told me, goes, Chief, I can't go on-call, I can't even go to Kroger to go to the grocery if we need water for supper. And that's true because when you're on-call, we expect you to show up. If people are on the station, you know, it's an electronic format, so everybody can see it. You're on the station when you do get a call, so they know you're coming. And if you're coming from Kroger, that's going to be such a delay, whether it's north or south, that you, you can't you, you put a restriction upon yourself for a large amount of time that you're living and aren't interested in that right now.
Something that you can implement with the new full-time staff to have a required number of on-call days? Why can't we do that?
Because there would be the they can come in anytime that there's an alarm that they are available, but again, they restrict themselves. So I'll give you the we have the four captains, all three of, or all four of them already live within county or adjacent county. But if they're at home and they're on-call, only one of them would have happened. So with Mrs. Pittler, when she was HR journalist, she helped me kind of realize that if they're outside of about a five mile window, it's not an emergency response and they're not really on-call, they're just responding back to the station. Because it would be much quicker to have trade partners come in for those times than it is to continue to have on-call and make our citizen wait and wait and wait for us to come in from different areas of the county.
And what about, as we condition, implement that they not be employed elsewhere, is that going to be in the full-time?
I don't know that that's legal. I've never witnessed that in any contract that I've ever seen that they can't work part-time. Chapter thirty-seven does a good job. It's in chapter thirty-seven, I take it's thirty-two, no. But any part-time job causes a conflict of interest with the city manager if you're a full-time employee of the city, which I think includes every, every.
Chapter thirty-seven, which means the only time I've been restricted anything was really during COVID when said they're not going to work in a part-time, get infected and not be able to work for us. Telling them they can't work part-time in the year again doesn't necessarily, they're going to show up in Tip City when they even call. I mean, their time off is their time off, so how they use it is up to them and that. This is what, this might kind of, like, go work somewhere else and go work over a couple of months, so.
I guess this question is for John, Ben, which is framing, you can't add restrictive covenants to public employees?
That's a good question and honestly, I don't want to give you an offer company. It seemed like that you could.
I have interfered with their full-time decision. Here, one, they would not be as likely to respond if their employees somewhere else. Two, you said that there was a safety issue, that people should not be working eighty hours per week, that you have people that were willing to do that now and you did not allow them to do that for your department. And so I think whether you're working full-time here and then working somewhere else, supplementing your hours, that same safety concern would be present, which would create a conflict with your full-time employment. Is that something, do you see it the same way?
They can't work part-time as more than working full-time, so they're full-time employees. Certain points, the chief passed the company law. Tell somebody at part-time, you're working all day, hours, you can't, I would. He's trying to stay within a certain model, he said, yes, we work a catch of hours, but you can't work in the same model as you are on the full-time. So that's bad. Forty-two hours on shift, so.
And, and part of moving to the full-time requirements are a full-time employee is much more dedicated to their full-time employer than a part-time. So I would suspect especially the individuals that we have been to extend those conditional offers to so far, could be much more active and then help us when we need than a part-time person who quite honestly is already working two, potentially three jobs and not being able to respond, not being good enough one to, there's a lot of our part-timers, assistant chief, I would have been there, but I was at my other part-time job. To exclude one employee from other games, from employment from another or starting their own business, I restrict employees on other, doing it all the time, it's not an open activity.
Well, it sounds like we have something in the code now, you said that you were in chapter thirty-two, that does apply to employees that we don't have with your primary job, which will be here. And so I'm not referring to part-time employees, I'm referring to employees that you're hiring now and you consider in their letter. Make sure that that's understood, that there would be the on-call provisions as well as restriction on category part-time employees.
It's their better option, man. And we presented probably police as the best.
Is that part of their letter then?
Call.
Or restricting
provisions in chapter thirty-seven already. Mentioned it right.
And I guess that was my question, then Mr. Eggleston, do you consider having a job at another department as?
My time off, I mean, sorry, somebody tells us that you can do that, I'm going to offer the company simply, it's my time off. If I want to go here or I want to go there, then I have a right to do that. How can you restrict me if I'm saying, well, Chief, I work the floors, I'm staying, this ain't, you know, say I can't do that. I'm working my shift, whenever I'm scheduled, I'm working my shift. So how are you going to oppose anything more of me saying, well, I'm sorry that you can't do anything else but work? First, I think we'd be, we'd have issues with that.
Tip City hired their first part-time person in nineteen sixty-six and he resigned unfortunately earlier this year. Good person, not saying anything bad about it, but he was full-time at an order department for that entire twenty-five year process. So that's just one shining example. Tip City has used part-time personnel or full-time elsewhere for greater than twenty-five years. So if we turn around and we start hiring the full-time personnel, we restrict them from working part-time, we're biting the. working part-time, we're biting the head fast for over 20 years. So that would be, it's not great.
Something we'll look into, again, to see if, I don't want to say restricting, but maybe some other options going through my head. But again, at this point, land is the land, can move forward, hiring them. Chief will keep on getting, emphasizing to the current workers, that we do need you here, the part-timers, to fill these shifts. Yeah, everybody takes it apart, makes things a whole lot easier. We will look into other options, what they may be, but, saying that you can't work anywhere else, and just.
I think I understand your role, and we'll do everything we can to have the personnel on duty at Tip.
In this field, obviously, that presents a safety risk. The other concern would be that if someone is employed elsewhere, they're much less likely to respond in a way that we need them to in being on-call or coming in if coverage is needed, and if we're going to all these full-time people with a dedicated shift, we're going to rely upon individuals. It's not going to be a pool of 42 any longer. The others have, I review your responses in terms of the exit interviews, and these that have left have cited issues with things that may result by hiring some full-time staff, such as safety, and the number of calls they have to cover, or being assigned to the ambulance. Have you reached out to any of those individuals, including past volunteers that were very dedicated, to see if they would be able to help the department?
Yes, and some of them actually reach out to us, unprovoked, as well, that they and coming back as the plan progresses. So, and some, I, I try to, so, yes, I make every effort to be as open as possible, and try to resolve the issues that we have.
And how many do you have in mind now, that maybe you've joined? So, the full-time positions are coming, volunteer, or?
Not part-time, voluntary or full-time.
Eric, can I ask you a few comments? Up time, we find a little section, Mr. Eggleston?
What?
Well, last time we had a little discussion about what was being done, and you said that both yourself and Mr. Freeman were going to have more information for us.
Well, I mean, again, the information really is, some letters regarding the sign violations on the code, which we're addressing, if we do, for, signed at the Burger King, assigned from the grocery store, we're looking at about $5,200, and the city will have to, assess a lot of property. Again, Mr. Freeman, we found out the legal aspects, but again, we've been sending letters. You can see a little bit, Mr. Eggleston has been, somebody out there cleaning. It's not 100%, but we've basically kind of tagged it, and said, "Well, we're going to get there, keep, get in there, to work behind the bill." So, we keep pushing, and we can get that resolved. So, those are two issues that I see that, at least at this point, we can try and move forward with. It's free, like, we started, gathers about.
Yeah. Station, oh, Mr. Carville. I understand from Mr. Carville, is that he's working with, right now, the property maintenance problems, like grass, at this point in time, talking to Mr. Carville. Giving them approximately 14 days to get it fixed, and if not, we're going under property and. So, things like that, at that point in time, we have to go. We've only been done that once or twice, or we've been accorded, and we did receive compliance, complete compliance when we did do that. A lot of those properties, if I may, are not, of market lives, things like that, they're not living there, so. They're nearly all residential.
So what's being done to enforce that on?
Now, that, I, that I'm unaware of. I know, yeah.
Basically, we, again, what we do is we send a, a letter, like, Collins sets out, calls our provider, and they can get there, they go ahead and.
Everything around Speedway, Burger King, those there, that, waiting more than 14 days.
Well, and again, contact, had somebody else there, waiting, they have gotten, gotten down 100% due to certain, what it was. So again, tell them, "We need to get this done," or, you know, they're going to, okay, a, this column called, the SC group, I got it, what they would do for the cause, I don't think they're looking at that, so, yeah, we're working with Eggleston, like, texting the day, showing the picture of Burger King, saying, "Hey, they're getting there," but you, they don't respond, and get more, but.
Why is it clear that the city will go in, and why is there a reason the city doesn't just call in? Hold those waits or moan it?
Well, again, he's started to do that himself. So, don't think, so we jump in there and just supersede and get it done, but at some point, when he stops.
Well, everyone's beyond the subject of you at this time.
No, say, if somebody.
If you're all set, we'd.
Somebody's been there for the last week, in and out, that hasn't, see, meets hardly through the shrubs anymore. The island's in there, with all the needed. So, it's just a matter of getting it back there to do it. I guess, right there, where the system's slowly working, but to jump on and try to, again, we can't even get a landscape to give us a price, but we can send our guys in. So let's see if he responds again, and say, "Okay." The one thing we know, he's an absentee landlord, so that makes it harder. So we spend more time handling these things, we need to get done. And, again, if they don't come back in a certain period of time, I guess we'll probably end up having to try to figure out if we can send our crews in there and do it, because, again, we're not even getting a landscape or two, give us a cost to do it. So, that may be the next step, is we have to do it. But it is getting done.
I'm feeling, I've been having the same conversation for four years, that we need to be able to be forward, something legislatively council can do, but, like that, I really hear this most often from people that I talk to, that they're very frustrated by the entrance to our city, where they can assist, that exchange, and the freeway area, which I hope the city will maintain once that's landscaping put in. But I don't understand the disconnect in Tip City, because I can go to a lot of other communities and look at their commercial properties, and I don't, but somewhere along the line, we've got to correct this. And to say, "We're waiting," or make excuses for the property owner, to me, doesn't make sense, because it's not all of a sudden, over a period of four years, and it's not all of a sudden that this stuff is overgrown, and it's not only Mr. Eggleston's property, but that area are believed to have a community that people enjoy living in, but it also is hindering our development. And I think there's some easier fixes here that we've talked about that aren't being implemented. So I'd like to get past this and find out, I think, council, the other council members have expressed many of the same things in study sessions. I don't like to continue to berate the point, but I'd like to see some of them.
Well, the option you really have, the only thing I can think of, is what the council wants to do. When you do for one, you do for all. That means, notice a paper that says, anything over six inches you need to maintain, we cut down, okay? So we send you one letter, and after that, we don't send you any more letters, we just go ahead and mow it. That's taken care of. So, if council wants to move in that direction, we're more than happy to do it. Again, it would probably mean the intent of a nuisance ordinance, and the fact that we own, yes, if Mr. Freeman disagrees, I don't have to notice you every time you got six inches of weed, I notice you once, you need to maintain it. So if you want that type of enforcement, then the city will do that type of enforcement. But it's not going to be just a plaza, it's going to be everybody along the street. If you got your one notice, we're not going to be a lookout to say, "It's six inches, if it's six inches, we're just going to go in and mow it."
Well, I think that, I mean, when I started council, the residential, and then I know Mr. Gibson worked hard to put together the property maintenance and some of these ordinances, which this council did and have, so that there is consistency. So we're not just talking about residential properties, we've included commercial in that. But I think, at this point, when you say, "Do we want to enforce it?" I'd say, "Yes," pretty lovely. I don't know about the rest of the council, you can ask them, but I feel like we have the support for getting that, going in and mowing it with city staff, I would support that.
That's your alternative. Instead of saying, "Oh, well, six inches will set you a notice," it's just, go in and mow it, send you the bill, you don't pay it, it goes on to assessment. And that can easily be done, if it complies with the law, the Supreme Statute. The way I read it is, one notice, and that's it. So.
I'm not hearing anyone say, "Don't do that."
What does, I'd like to hear Mr. Freeman.
Silence doesn't mean approval.
I'd like to hear, what does Mr. Freeman think about that?
Yeah, you can, I think it's about total about $75.
That's what you mean?
Yeah, for what it costs the city to go ahead and.
He's perfect.
Perma.
Actually, this was for a free question. Is there a difference between hiring a firm and doing ourself? Because I think it's going to be challenging for us to quantify our time or cost to be, that on, probably, tax assessment, as opposed, because we're here all the time anyway, we're here to, of the city. Whether we have to hire a firm to come in and hit all these residential properties, clearly we have a bill in hand, assessments is our issue, our employees. I see that as being completely different than hiring. And say, "This is what we're taking to remedy these problems." Same thing when we talk about asphalt, or typically we're doing, then our new asphalt work, and I can hear the county and say, "I've got a bill in hand, it's never been paid," and it gives up our taxes. If it's our employees doing it, I'm not sure. And then that's where I have to work with you to make sure that that's appropriate. But then, well, everybody's here tonight thinking, "This is resolved, and we can just take care of it." And I think, I think there's a difference between our employees doing it and outside, and then we can talk about.
I have a view that it should be the city employees.
No, no, no. I think it's challenging to get that on.
Can we, can you present some options for the proposed ordinance in the study session?
We have the ordinance.
Well, I did the enforcement, basically, we did have our crew, crews go in and mow, and then set the bill, invoice to, to be in. So, I guess it really, that's not what council worried about, whether we're sending invoices. I guess at this point, if council says, "Look, we filed the ordinance, you sent one letter, mow it, keep it, it's trying to get somebody to do it, they'll do it." Side is, using your own crews, is that means they're not doing something else. So, again, the direction the council is.
You don't need any formal direction. Not just saying, "Yes," that's what we want to say is right.
Is, maybe we're noticing too much to be nice, to say, "Do this," but most of the properties, Collins sites are vacant, so it's easier to go in and mow, they're not necessarily those that are occupied other than this. So the homes and stuff we do usually are vacant, and he goes in, our guy mows it when they get that chance. But again, it'll be, Collins will go drive by, help the six inches get, go call, call the vendor, they'll go in and mow it, and we'll just keep up.
I would echo President Houghman and say, move forward.
I just don't, I hear your point of view, but, overkill, you know, if, if the city does it, and we have a cost, and we say, "This is what it costs," it strikes me as trying to accommodate an explanation too far.
Other thing that I have a question on is the signs. We have, we're in the inside of the park now, as well as two, so, let me just pipe out, follow up on what you said earlier. When is that enforcement going to take place to remove that?
Send a letter, certify, and obviously, with the certified letters, they don't pick up certified letters. So then, it's Mr. Freeman to say, "Okay, here's the timeline, you have to do it, what's that next step?" Again, $5,200 to have them removed. So, he gives us the go-ahead, we'll contact the company, they'll come in and take them down. But that becomes, is that personal property? What do we do with them down? Does that go behind the building now? What are we going to do with those signs once we get them?
Well, second one is getting them down. So where are we at? Do you agree with that comment?
Else, and the gas picked it up.
Okay, so it's not delivered yet, so the next step?
Well, it's, it can be delivered, we haven't got it back. Chief, this is, if he's delivery or whatever, not picked up, this is what they do. So, we're waiting for that to come back, but at this point.
Is that Cameron's dedication, if he doesn't?
No.
It's the timeline after that, 60 days?
No.
Are you allowed to take down a sign, business, if there's some thing?
Yeah, if, Mayor, it's a decent question. And so that will layer into, I think the bigger question would be, you can assess them for having to go and take them down. We're here, we're having an agreement or arrangement with property to come get their sign and take their sign. About the, signing compliance, we've been sending this note, receipt to them, but I think that.
I think that, sorry, so, I'm sure, if I can spring that it was out of compliance with our, so, now, just we, weeks, we get the sign up, is that correct?
Obviously, we're, hands the vendor, we tell them, and they can come in, we can, obviously, if they say, "You'll come visit, two weeks, I'll be, two weeks, they get it out in a week, or days, that's just whatever they, just being able to let them know to go ahead and do it. Question, question, it's, it's a table, the side. You could get yourself in deep trouble with this and don't think you can. In doing this now, this is putting pig on lipstick. The building is structurally bad. Eccleston knows this is a tax write-off. He owns other properties. We're trying to show something here so people can get a, doing things. This has been a problem for years. We're dealing with it. And if it just takes a couple of times, he's going to fight this all the way. He's got the money to fight it, he'll do it, it's a tax write-off. And, like, again, guys going after this with fourteen thousand things is not going to change this. This is a five to seven year operation to get this building down and get redeveloped. And the people at Tip City has to know that. This problem didn't come on, this came on in the last ten years. You know, I've talked to the owners, the people that are in it, they have new air conditioning, the roof leaks. You know. Well, but you, but, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just. And force. You know, you, you two are lawyers, what this game's played. We can do, we can, we can do what we're saying to do. I agree with you. But to make this show now, to get reelected people, isn't flying with me. The problem is horses. Catherine, don't go there.
Assume, you're speaking to me or Mayor McFarland because we are voting on the ballot?
No, don't go there. I hadn't, this, we're, we're looking at ten o'clock right now and we know much wrong. We're going to try to do something about it. Let's start up, stop our diatribes on stuff and let's do something good for the city.
Well, I agree. I don't, I don't think that anyone is doing any. The word Mayor McFarland, they want to.
Well, it's funny, you say you've been on this board for four years and you bring all this up now?
No, go back and look at all of the minutes. I don't see how many, how often, or you can ask Mr. Eccleston, I've asked him about going, I think he would be. But I have advocated for cleaning up that area for four years from day one. And I doubt that previous council, like I said earlier, Mr. Gibson actually took the initiative to write this ordinance and move this along. And we did vote on that. And what I'd like to see is that reinforce the ordinance that we have. I think we should do that across the board. I think we should do that fairly and sure that the citizens have what they want. That is how that area.
That would be a good idea. Take our direction from council on what you'd like us to do. I know previously getting to your, I was supposed to, a blinders on, go, some complaints, don't worry about it. We try to do the opposite, not be proactive. But, yeah, one thing to do in government is try to be as friendly as you can and get something done. And again, I tell you, with zoning and all types of things, always die, yes, it looks terrible. Get the owner to do it and just keep working with them, eventually accomplish the goal. And it takes a little time, just like this, but it does. Now, that being said, again, if you want to strictly follow this, we'll be, we'll be happy, but we'll be able to do that. If we want to follow this strictly to what the code is, then again, we're being the law director, we'll say, this is what we're going to do at this point. Keep an eye on, it'll be a little more work for staff, because they'll have to go back every so often to check those properties that have been violated and make sure that they are vacant, they are kept up. And it'll be easy to some degree, it's just getting things scheduled. But I can tell you that one community here ago. I asked the guys, this community violating the weed laws, the guys said, we just go and mow it. You know, and you can set a violation, we just come to property, we mow it and we don't have to worry about complaints. So everybody does it a different way and it's going to be a desire of public council. To be as friendly or courteous, obviously, and saying, here's your notice, you've noticed once, why would you not take that you're going to get another one? If you're going to mow it, but maybe, maybe, maybe the process we're doing is just too many notices and we'll just simply scale that back and move forward, take care of the council's concerns. Mr. Freeman gave us this week, she says, you have to go ahead and move forward the signage, we'll contact the vendor, we'll get down the signage, we think it'll be down and we'll move on from there. And let's hope in two weeks, probably get a schedule to get it done. But once the vendor says, they'll get there, I'll let council know and they'll know that, since I was there, you can take care of it.
Does anyone else have any comments?
At the risk of driving us on, just a little bit off there. I know, and I will keep this short and sweet. I know previously before we had hired Mr. Tuss to come in and do a renovation, we had talked about doing the street scape over there. A lot of stuff, we couldn't do anything about it. I would like to see that brought back in to help with that area a little bit. The, the street scape that goes into the plaza and the, the wall that's been falling down for three weeks now by the liquor store and the bank. And, and I would like to see that brought back up and, and somebody brought back toward it. Um, and, and I would leave it at that, but we do not need to have a discussion about it. It, it's.
So this is summary, I would like to see how, and then your feedback. Thank you. But you know, we're channeling also. We've got other property owners in town, we need to start looking at too. Yes. And again, we, we're, we are being more proactive about that, I tell council.
So, moving on to citizen comments on, for items not on the agenda, we're going to. Well, can we add your name with the address?
Aaron Moran, superintendent at the city schools, just started August first. I just wanted to, a few of you here, not everybody. So just wanted to introduce myself and right next door, hopefully we can work together on some things. We've got a couple of. Our agency, so, you know, we're partners, we're each other's. So what questions might you have for me?
The only comment I'll make is thank you for staying this long.
Yeah. Eight days.
Maybe we could have a school board and a council for our joint task force, have a group of times at the meeting.
Now, you should roll out your last few, or we're good now. We have, congratulations.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And then if you have a comment, take that part, we'll need your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Merrick. My address is twenty-two twelve Vireo Drive, and that's in Fairborn. I wanted to introduce myself tonight, I think. Um, I am the new executive director of the chamber, and today is day three, so I appreciate we don't have any questions yet because I'll just have to make something up and I'm tired. But, no, thank you all, this is very interesting, and I'm really excited to be with you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
We are forty-three, we're back in Port Royal. I'm here on behalf of the partnership, and we just wanted to thank you for our partnership with the city. We had two great first Friday events. We had one in June, one in July, both were family fun activities, they were in conjunction with our market days. We really appreciate the presence from the police department, helping get people off of the street for the community concerts so we can get the roads open back up. That has helped me tremendously. And tomorrow at nine AM, and Wednesday at seven PM, we have meetings open to the public for our twenty-four events. We are looking to restructure some of our events so we can collect more data from these events. So, any questions?
Thanks for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you here.
Thank you.
I'll stick to the board. I want to move on to comments of council and the city manager, Mr. Slabel. Mr. Schwab. Mr. Ensland.
I'm enjoying having conversations regularly about the uptown revitalization. It doesn't have to be on the agenda, we can do some study sessions, that would be good, and the meeting doesn't go for four hours. That's all I've got.
Mr. Pinder. Mr. Libby. Mayor McFarland.
I'll make this as short as possible. Travel since the last meeting on the seventeenth of July. On the eighteenth, I participated in the ribbon petting for the new owners of the board and brush here in Tip. Eighteenth, did a road trip with our city manager and council person, Pinder, to surprise Janice. On the twentieth, Mr. Eccleston and I attended the Miami County Mayor's Mangers Association Breakfast Meeting. On the twenty-fifth, I organized two new members of the restoration board. On the thirty-first, I attended the tri-agency meeting between the schools and township and the city. On the first of October, ribbon petting and impact compounding out here on Tom Davis Way. And. For the month, or since the last meeting. Also, congratulations again to, on your prestigious award. And with that obvious time back to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, congratulations. Please thank you again for your service. I'd also like to inform everyone that the CIC does meet the second Tuesday of every month at eleven AM here at the city building, so that is no meeting. We appreciate having people there, we're sending your input, Mr. Libby and I are the. So if you have any information you'd like to share with us, we would encourage you to contact us by email.
One other thing. This one, just again, I think, this base sent out my letter of my retirement, moving June twenty, twenty twenty-four. Just I'm a better official. Good candidates.
Well, we definitely appreciate the service, Mr. Eccleston and council. As you see that letter, we'll be responding with acceptance for retirement. If we have nothing further than just kind of a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it second.
Okay, now, please, Colonel, Mr. Slabel.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland, Mr. Libby.
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
President Houghman.
Yes.
Mr. Schwab.
Yes.
I just wanted to introduce myself really quickly. I think we've met before. I was with the Dayton Development Coalition for a couple of years, mostly on the jobs Ohio side. But I think we've written to each other, ED meetings here, here and there. But, yeah, in any case, I would love to get on your calendar here in the next couple of weeks so you can understand what I can do, work together with you and.